Soa al-hawa.
Soa atul, soa atul, mabi baadla al-maka.
Soa al-hawa, from Michigan or Washington.
Min yow milli kawal ya watan ismaul, kinna sawa. La yow milli bi'asak ya watan il-gayim, ra'ha'ni ba'asawa.
From Michigan on W N Z K six ninety A M. And from Washington on W D M V seven hundred A M.
Sawa, sawa fil-hawa, wal-hamini mit-sawiyah.
Soa al-hawa, you're here through the air.
Good morning. America.
Laman kun sawa, ya hayati sawa. Daibin bil-hawa, matisa'bi sata. M'du li li roh, anna mabadi roh.
Good morning, the Muslim, Jumana Kehrouz. We're talking with them today. The date of today is December second, two thousand and fourteen. I'm here to talk to everyone. I think if the sound is a little far away after the three calls, let me get it to the studio. I think to all the listeners, ah, the pleasure to be here today is not to tell the truth. But if it's in particular, rather than being in the studio after a few calls. Because today is very special and very unique. I know that they're going to talk to me. I think we're confident that they're here in the studio earlier. The Muslim, Maryam Bazzie. Maryam, can you hear me? Maryam, can you hear me?
Oh, she's coming right now, one moment.
Again, I want to remind you that the date of today is December second, two thousand and fourteen. And the special for today is the Muslim, Maryam Bazzie. She is the last candidate for the board of education in Dearborn. For Dearborn Public Schools. She is one of the three board members to take on a new membership to the Dearborn Public Schools. Maryam, can you hear me?
Hi, hi, Jumana, how are you this morning?
Good morning, Maryam. And my apologies again to you and all the listeners. As I am speaking to you, I am taking the exit. The amount of traffic is indescribable. I have been on the road for over forty minutes now. I don't know if it has anything to do with the holidays and if so what exactly. But I should be in the studio in less than five minutes. Can you hear me clearly, Maryam?
Yes, I can.
Okay, therefore, my hope is that our listeners do hear me clearly as well. For the full hour today, December second. We have the prominent attorney, Maryam Bazzie. Who resides in Dearborn, who is a resident of Dearborn. And who is not only an attorney, not only a past president of the Arab American Political Action Committee. Serving for four years, I believe, four consecutive terms. But not too long ago, she was elected to the Dearborn Public Schools of Education. One of three, and might I also add, with great pride. She also received the highest number of votes. Ah, four, three open seats for Dearborn Public Schools of Education. Maryam was very happy to have you. We know you are a very busy lawyer. Not only are you a public official. You are also at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. You're a prosecuting attorney. And a mother of three. I know you are extremely busy. I know what you have to do today to make it to the studio. And again, my apologies, you are there ahead of me. I want to welcome you into the studio. I want to tell our listeners that we have an open-ended agenda today. I want to talk about Miss Bazzie's achievements as a, an Arab American woman, as a Middle Eastern woman. I want to talk about her achievements as a woman. And I want to talk about some of the issues that touch and pertain to the Middle Eastern community. We also want to open up the, um, um, the calls. So that people who have questions or comments on the topic and/or to Miss Bazzie can call at two four eight five five seven three three zero zero. One more time, two four eight five five seven three three zero zero. Maryam and James, our wonderful producer. If we can take a very quick break and we shall resume live, God willing.
Soa al-hawa.
Soa atul.
Soa al-hawa, you're here through the air.
Good morning. America.
Jumana Kehrouz, you've seen her images on giant billboards across the metro. Jumana Kehrouz, you've seen her images on buses across the city. Now get to know Jumana Kehrouz.
It's sad, but it seems like we live in an age where most lawyers are focused on the bottom line. The money. And a lot of people have stopped wanting to truly advocate. I never forget this case. This woman chose me as a lawyer of last resort. She was hit by a semi truck. I was able to recover about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Not every lawyer is an advocate, but every lawyer should be an advocate.
Let Jumana Kehrouz protect your rights. Call the law offices of Jumana Kehrouz at one eight six six your rights, extension one hundred. Or visit yourrights.com.
Itto ana ya na niba. Nufaf al-akhdood is sahel. Wa'ala khatt is sama zaraan. Marthoomi tariqin naha. Ano mitki ya ba'abii. Meraitna haniyakki. Ghali'tu bedghori la'gabi. Watarit ta'amu mesawi. Ano mitki ya ba'abii. Meraitna haniyakki. Ghali'tu bedghori la'gabi. Watarit ta'amu mesawi. W'talni l'amin hazin mu'ish hazin. Bisquut ad-dhori, t'kassari la'hanee. Ida rahte hjerin, habibi. Orha'te thami, ya habibi. Ida rahte hjerin, habibi. Orha'te thami, ya habibi. Dhalni t'zakkarni, w'tzakkar tariqin naha. Tariqin naha. Tariqin naha. Tariqin naha la'ayr, fowad dawil makso. Bi'chirir sun dawal, ik'tub al-hawa so. Tariqin naha la'ayr, fowad dawil makso. Bi'chirir sun dawal.
Good morning. Again, I want to tell all the listeners, the date of today is December second, two thousand and fourteen. And I'm here in the studio, the Muslim, ah, Mrs. Maryam Bazzie. Maryam, you're welcome. I know we agreed yesterday that we're going to speak in English. But I wanted to tell the listeners that you're speaking quickly. To show them that you're very good at speaking the Arabic. And we decided to talk today in the English language. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
If you'll allow me, and if the listeners will allow me, we're going to talk in the English language. We're going to talk to the Muslim, Maryam Bazzie. We want to remember that the phone number is two four eight five five seven three three zero zero. Again, two four eight five five seven three three zero zero. Maryam Bazzie, welcome again. I am very thankful to you that you took a number of actions today that allowed you to be here. Including, but not limited, you know, handing your three children to your sister. So that they can be dropped at school, so that you can be here. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for having me.
It is my pleasure. We are going to spend about fifty-five minutes here today. I want to tell you that normally Leila Husaini, who you know very well, ah, is here. But Leila is out of town right now, and I believe Leila is in Saudi Arabia. And the first Tuesday of every month, Maryam, I do sponsor the whole hour. And, ah, I bring in guests that, you know, I want to engage and introduce to the listeners. So this is the first Tuesday of the month. Normally, Leila would be here. I am sure that, ah, we are in her thoughts today. I know that she arranged for this meeting before she left. She reached out to you. We talked about the agenda and everything else. I want to tell the listeners, she's not here today. But Leila should be in the studio sometime very soon. Is that correct, James? Do we know when Leila is coming back? Tomorrow. Tomorrow. So she leaves us, ah, to be today, and she arrives tomorrow. That's fine. Um, I want to remind the listeners that the phone number to call is two four eight five five seven thirty three hundred. Maryam Bazzie, well, Maryam, um, before, we talked a little bit about, you know, from the time you were born here in the United States. You are not an immigrant. You are a first generation, ah, child of parents who immigrated here. So your parents are a lot like me. I immigrated here, your parents immigrated here. I just want to tell the listeners who you are. And I know that I'm not going to probably be able to list all of your achievements. But I want to note among your many notable achievements. And I know this is not the end for you. This is probably the very beginning.
Thank you.
Because I've seen you in action, Maryam, and you are a very powerful woman. A very quiet force, but very powerful force. And true power is quiet, by the way, in my opinion. Ah, you now serve on the Board of Education for Dearborn. So you serve on the Dearborn Public School, ah, Board of Education. Am I right?
Yes, I was just elected and I'll officially take office in January.
You'll officially take office in January? That's right? Okay, you will be sworn in, right?
Yes.
Let me know when you get sworn in, because it will be my pleasure to attend. Do you know the date? You probably do already.
It'll be at the first school board meeting, ah, prior to the meeting commencing.
Okay, is it, is it some grand party, like they do say for judges or no? Or is it a little different?
It's going to be a little bit more low-key. I suppose we haven't worked out the details yet. I know I spoke with the superintendent about it. And he had indicated to me, um, I guess that we could speak a little bit later about the details.
Of course, we will be talking about all of this. I just wanted to begin by introducing, I know a large number of our listeners know exactly who you are. And perhaps there is another section of our listeners who maybe are going to be very, very pleased and very inspired to get to know you more today. Including, but not limited to women. Ah, so you are serving right now, or you will be serving, ah, in January on the Dearborn Public Schools of Education. You have also served for four years on a, um, very male-dominated, might I add?
Well, when I first started, yes.
Am I gonna, you know, are we gonna throw attacks at my good friend, Abed Hamud? And Osama Siblani and all of them?
Well, I gotta tell you this.
We're talking about you having served for four consecutive years as the president of A P A C, Arab American Political Action Committee. But go ahead. Tell me about this male-dominated.
Well, when I first joined the organization, ah, there were, there were not very many women. But, um, it not because the people within the organization, particularly Abed and Osama, were encouraging women to come. It's just politics generally seems to be kind of a male-dominated field. And so it can be...
It has been, and it is just changing now. This is like when, ah, women used to tell you that, ah, women who, ah, attended law school thirty and forty years ago, they'll tell you that they were the first woman in law school or the only woman in law school. It was a male-dominated field.
Yes. And so when I first went in, there weren't as many women. It was more men, ah, majority were men. However, when I became president of A P A C, one of the things I remember then telling people that I would like to see is more women, ah, within the organization itself. And I can say now, we have more, ah, women officers in the organization than we do, ah, male officers in the organization. And I think that's, ah, because more women are involved. That's because women are seeing that within that organization in particular, women are, um, given the opportunity to grow and take powerful positions and be involved and are limited. And so they've been, um, they've taken to that, I think. And we have a lot more women now today, if not more than, ah, men in the organization. So that's something I'm really proud of.
Well, that is, that is really beautiful. And I, ah, around two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight, I was rather an active participant of A P A C at the time. And, um, then my involvement became a little bit less as life took over and life got in the way and whatnot. And I heard you became president, the first thing, I'm like, oh my God, good luck. With all these powerful men in that organization, her work is cut out for her. And then, you know, I kept getting news about what a capable president you were and how, you know, you were able to hold your own. And you were elected president for four consecutive years at A P A C.
Yes.
And the first woman.
Yes. And they are all one-year terms. And so I'm very honored at, ah, the fact that the organization continued to reelect me. And, ah, while there were many powerful men within the organization, I have to say that they were very supportive the entire time.
I know that.
And they were very helpful. And so...
I know that Abed and Osama particularly were extremely supportive.
Yes. And everybody, the entire community, really.
They're the founding members of this rather powerful organization. I mean, they had every right, you know, to have a vested interest in that organization. It's their baby.
Yes. Yes. And that's how they, ah, you know, it is their baby. I think there's no better term that can be used for it. And so, ah, it was a great honor. Um, and I, the way I was accepted within the entire community and the words of encouragement and support I received from the entire community was great.
And now we have a woman who serves as the president of A D C here in Michigan.
Yes.
Fatima Abu Drabou.
Yes.
Right? And, ah, the other thing that I also want to quickly tell the listeners about is you are an attorney and a very successful attorney, a prosecuting attorney, ouch, um, working for the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. You have been there for eight, nine years, I believe?
I've been there since, ah, two thousand and six.
All right.
Beginning of two thousand and six, I was a volunteer in two thousand and five.
Okay. So you have been a prosecuting attorney out of the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office for the past eight, nine years. And there too, you have a very prominent role. I believe you work in the, you work under Kim Worthy, our beloved Wayne County Prosecutor. Another powerful woman, another powerful role model. Ah, who managed to remain unscathed, by the way, in the midst of all the scandals that have surrounded Wayne County and its many offices. And, um, I believe you serve, and correct me if I'm wrong, ah, in the mortgage fraud division?
Yes, in the Mortgage and Debt Fraud Task Force.
Okay. All right. Very good. And we are going to talk about that. I just wanted to begin by giving our listeners a broad overview of the many roles that you have served. And I want to congratulate you for, you know, being elected to the Board of Education in Dearborn. Um, James, if we can take our very first, ah, break. And we are going to resume with attorney, public official, Maryam Bazzie.
Soa al-hawa.
Soa atul.
Soa al-hawa, you're here through the air.
Good morning. America.
Jumana Kehrouz, you've seen her images on giant billboards across the metro. Jumana Kehrouz, you've seen her images on buses across the city. Now get to know Jumana Kehrouz.
The war broke out in my home country, Lebanon. I was eleven years old. And I saw a lot of bloodshed and inequality and poverty. You can't grow up in an environment like that and not be affected by it and not want to make a difference. I graduated from Yale University with a master's in A P A C. I speak four languages. Have always been innate in me fighting for the underdog and trying to do whatever it is I can to make a difference in the world.
Let Jumana Kehrouz protect your rights. Call the law offices of Jumana Kehrouz at one eight six six your rights, extension one hundred. Or visit yourrights.com.
Are we back on the air? All right, James, thank you very much. We are back on the air. Today is, ah, December second, Tuesday, December second, two thousand and fourteen. And with us for the remainder of the hour is, um, our newest public official from Dearborn Public Schools of Education, prominent attorney, ah, Maryam Bazzie. Maryam, welcome again. I know the calls have started rolling in. I just want to tell the listeners very quickly that you were born in this country, Maryam. Your parents came here while they were, um, young. And they got married here and gave birth to you and your siblings here in the United States. Correct?
Yes. Well, they married in Lebanon, but then shortly after marrying, they came to the U.S. And they came to the U.S. with the hopes of a better future for themselves and for their children. And Alhamdulillah, they were able...
Tell me, what did you there do?
Well, my dad, ah, is the founder and president of Saad Wholesale Meats in the Eastern Market. And he's been there since the, ah, early seventies. So it's a prominent business that wholesales and retails halal meat all over the U.S.
So did your father create that business?
Yes. My dad did. My dad is a butcher by trade. And so he took his, ah, what he knew, what he knew how to do well in Lebanon. And he brought it to America and created a successful business from it. And that was able to, um, from that, he was able to grow and take on some other businesses.
What about your mom? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
My mom, ah, I mean, my mom was with him the entire way. My mom had actually been in America, had gone back to Lebanon. She'd been here when she was younger. She had gone back to Lebanon and then came back after she married my father. My mom has been, um, a part of Saad Wholesale Meats, helping him, supporting him all the way. But she also had six children, so she had her hands full.
But she, well, of course, I mean, being a mom of six children is, is a full-time and a half job.
Yes.
But you said in addition to that, she, she partnered with him and held hands with him in the business.
Yes.
Helped him.
I mean, it was a family business. We used to sit around on the weekends together and work with each other, ah, in terms of the finances, getting all the paperwork for the business together. And that was a family affair for us every week as we were growing up and...
And you have brothers?
I do.
Did they help with the butcher meat? Did they, did they work on the weekends at night?
Yes. Ah, my brother Samid is actually there. And my brother Mohammed is, ah, there now. They've kind of the next generation of Saad Wholesale Meats. And I'm very proud of them and everything that they've, ah, been able to do while, you know, working with, ah, the meat market as well.
So two of your siblings, ah, are carrying on the family business.
Yes.
You are a public official and an attorney. And what about your three other siblings?
Well, my older sister, ah, has a business as well. She started a, um, management, ah, rental company for, um, homes. They purchase homes, they fix them up, and they rent them out. And, ah, so we're proud of that as well. I have another sister who's actually pursuing her, ah, master's degree at Harvard right now. So we're proud.
Harvard. She didn't get accepted at Yale, is that why?
I don't think she's complaining. Ah, and then I have...
Just saying.
My youngest sister, ah, Leal, who is, ah, working full-time and going to school. And, ah, you know, she's trying to figure out exactly what she wants to do right now.
She must be a little younger?
Yes, she is.
How old is she?
She's, ah, twenty-four.
Oh my goodness, she's a baby.
Yes, she is.
Might she become a lawyer as well?
Ah, I don't know if that's her path.
Right. Well, that's, that's another American dream success for your mom and dad coming here and, you know, working the sweats up, giving, giving birth to six children. And, um, all of you, you know, are high achievers. From your sister, who's a businesswoman managing, that's, that's another male-dominated field. You know, managing rental properties. Your two brothers who are taking over the business. You and the prosecutor's office and in public office. Um, your, your sister who is studying at Harvard. Your other sister who is a budding student and trying to figure out what her path is. That's really very impressive. And a family of six, that's not easy.
No, it, you know, we've had our struggles, but I think we've... We've had a great support system and foundation, so...
Was it hard for your parents coming here? It must have been way less hard for you to be born here. But, ah, having been born here, but was it hard for your parents? You know, do you have discussions with your mom or your dad about how hard it was for them when they, when they arrived here? The way, it was hard for me when I arrived here twenty-seven, twenty-eight years ago?
You know, I, I know that it was difficult. You're coming from, um, a country where the language is completely different.
Right.
And the customs are different. And you're trying to become, um, a co, I guess, um, to learn. Integrate into this new society. But it was even more difficult for my mom, because my mom was here before she got married. And she was very young. And she talks about her experiences in an area that wasn't very friendly to Arab Americans. And people weren't very nice to her or her siblings.
Tell me about that, because I want to talk to you about the, the Dearborn of then versus the Dearborn of now.
Well, I don't believe, when my mom was young, I don't believe that they lived in Dearborn. I, I think they lived in one of the other cities. But, um, it was, I know that it was very difficult. It was an area where there weren't very many Arab Americans. And it was an area where they were picked on because they were different. Um, I know that when Dear, when they first came to Dearborn after they got married, Dearborn was very different. It was a smaller community. It was a growing community. And, um, I think the community was trying to find its way. And they were trying to figure out who they were. They started their first mosque. They, they laid the roots of what would become a very successful and, um, successful community.
Um, you grew up in Dearborn?
I did.
Okay. And so you have been there for, you know, quite a few years.
Yes.
How has Dearborn changed for you? A lot of people say, boy, Dearborn has changed a lot.
Well, it's, I think it's integrated a lot. It's changed with every ethnic community that comes in. When you get a large ethnic community together, the first thought is people want to hold on to their values, um, that they brought over with them, their culture, I guess. Um, they want to hold on to their language and their customs and everything. And when the first generation does that, I think there's a fear of losing ourselves in the, by integration, being integrated and losing who are, what our customs and our values are. Over the past...
Losing your identity as you are trying to integrate into a new society.
Yes. And I think that as time goes by, people realize that we aren't losing ourselves. We're gain, we're just becoming different. We are, we still are, um, a very cultural community. We're a very proud community. We're proud of our heritage. We're proud of where we're from. But we're also proud that we're American, ah, that we have, that we live in this country. We're proud of what our country has done for us, what we have done for our country and what we continue to do. And I think Dearborn is a great example of an ethnic community coming in and helping it grow and helping it, um, get bigger and more successful and transforming it into, um, or letting, Dearborn sustained itself even when the economy was bad. And the way it sustained itself is because we had this community within it that wanted to see it continue to succeed. And I think that's an important part of why it was able to stay afloat throughout, um, our recession in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and two thousand and ten.
Maryam, you mentioned in passing that your mom, you know, referenced some not very friendly toward Arab Americans experiences.
Yes.
Ah, tell me a little bit more about that. And I want you to compare her experience with your experience, having been born here and growing up Arab American here.
Well, I grew up in Dearborn, and so there were other Arab Americans around me. I know that, um, in the... I know that in the times that my mom talked about it, she said people weren't friendly, they weren't nice, they picked on her, for lack of a better word.
And that's non-Arabes?
Non-Arabes, yes. But she lived in a different, and once again, I can't recall exactly where she grew up.
That's fine. She lived outside of Dearborn, but it does not matter, it's represented above the United States.
Yes. But when I grew up, there were, there were a lot of Arab-Americans around me. There were people who kind of were going through the same thing that I was going through. They had their culture, they had their identity, they had their values. But they were trying to kind of learn how the American culture fit and blended with their own identities. And I want to say it was very accepting of me. I went to a couple of different elementary schools in Dearborn because we had moved. One that was primarily Arab-American students. And I transferred to a school that at the time was primarily non-Arab students. And that was a little bit different for me. But I think people, the students were still kind, they were still nice. They didn't treat me any differently and I didn't feel different.
Was it difficult for you carving your path to becoming a lawyer? And then taking on some key positions that are, let's just say, atypical still to this day of another Arab-American woman living here in the United States? I mean, whether it is, you know, being the president of APEC, again, a heavily male-dominated, you know, organization? Or whether it is being on the Board of Education for the Dearborn Public Schools? Did that come easy for you?
It, it didn't. I think it, especially when I was growing up, when I was growing up, people were, women weren't pursuing higher education as much as they are now. And so for a long time, I didn't think that I was going to pursue higher education, simply because in the community it wasn't there.
When did you graduate from law school?
I graduated from law school in two thousand five.
Okay, so we're talking about fifteen years ago, before you, you started law school, okay.
Yes, I'm talking when I was in high school.
Yeah, high school, fifteen years ago, fifteen, sixteen years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I actually realized that I could get an education when I had my first Arab-American woman teacher. She was my seventh grade teacher and it was the first time I had seen an Arab-American woman with a career. And at that point, it started to kind of sow the seeds in my mind that you could have a career and be Arab. And it's not because I, no one ever told me I couldn't, but society around me, all the women I knew were stay-at-home moms.
Right. You didn't have role models around you. Because again, your path is still unusual. And that is why I wanted to talk about who around you, you know, where did you draw your inspiration for, you know, going into the paths that you have taken?
Well, I gotta say, even though there weren't women around me that, at the time, a lot of women who were pursuing-
Didn't embody some of the-
There were, our family still pushed education. So it was important to get good grades in school. It was important to do well in school. And so they were putting the foundation for me.
You know, having higher education, was that pushed by your mom and dad too?
Yes.
Okay.
We were going to go, we were going to go to college. It was a natural progression for us. And so it was, it was something that was expected of us. And so they, they helped, they helped me lay the foundation for what I would become in the future. I didn't know I was going to be a lawyer. I knew I had thought about it, but I wasn't, I didn't know what my path would be.
But you're saying that you were so impressed even by your seventh grade Arab-American teacher?
Yes.
She was your first exposure to the notion, like you said, that sowed, sowed the seeds in your mind that an Arab-American woman can have a career?
Yes. It was the first time I had, maybe it was the first time I had noticed it.
Sure.
And that would be a fairer statement. But it was, it really did sow those seeds. And so then, as I started to grow, I realized that I could have a career and I could do something. I just didn't know what that career was. With my parents instilling education in me and me going forward, it was an evolving process. What did I want to do? I thought I was going to go into education at one point, but I knew that I had a, I guess I was drawn to the study of law. And I ultimately decided to go down that path. I've met other Arab-American women along the way. I have an aunt that I met for the first time. I hadn't known her before, but I really saw her and spoke with her after graduating from high school. And she was an attorney and she lived in Washington DC. And I was very impressed by her.
Sure.
And so once again, it was another person that had given me that inspiration that I can, there's another path that can go down. It was about balancing, how do I get a career and still have a family?
You were already thinking about that back then?
Yes. Because at the end of the day, our culture, the idea of having a family, getting married and kind of pursuing that portion of your life was very important. And it still is very important in our culture. And so I wanted to be able to do both. And it's been a struggle. It's been a balancing, balancing the, the two things in a way that everyone feels and everything feels that they're getting their correct portion of time, I guess. I don't, they're not feeling kind of left out, I guess.
Correct. And so you got the idea to go to law school?
Yes.
What law school? And if you would allow me to interrupt for a minute, I just want to remind the listeners that I am talking to one of our newest public officials who will take office in January in Dearborn on the Dearborn School of Public, the Dearborn Public School Board of Education.
Yes.
Something like that. Board of Education for the Dearborn Public Schools. And also a former president, four terms, serving for four terms on APEC, Arab-American Political Action Committee, a very powerful organization out of Dearborn. And also a prosecuting attorney, an attorney in Duane County Prosecutor's Office, a mom of three, a wife, and the list goes on and on and on. I wanted to talk to you about going to law school. What law school did you attend?
Wayne State University Law School.
Which is where I went for law school too. And by the way, it's a very prominent law school.
Yes.
The pass rate at Wayne State, I had the pleasure of speaking. Isn't that funny how life turns? I was a Wayne State law student, law student, and I was asked by the dean about a month ago to go speak to Wayne State law students.
Okay.
It was, it was such a, it was a three hundred and sixty degree, you know?
Yes.
From being a scared student there, not knowing where I was going to get my first job from, not knowing whether I have what it takes to make it, to going and speaking to Wayne State law students. I found that to be almost a spiritual experience, right? How was it at Wayne State? Was it difficult for you? Or did you, you had the struggles of a normal struggling law student? Law school is not easy at all.
It's not easy.
And the foreign language they teach you.
It, you know, it's not easy. And it was a little bit different for me than it was, I guess, a traditional student at the time. Because I got married three days after my first set of law school finals.
Oh, my God. So after you finished your first year?
After, no, after I finished my first semester.
First semester.
And so trying to plan a wedding.
Why did you need to do that then?
You know, it was, uh-
What was the rush, Maryam?
You know, it was my, it was, you know, my-
Your biological clock was ticking, ticking, ticking.
I wish it was that.
Remember that movie, My Cousin Vinny?
Yes. You know, it was, it was a date that we had just kind of decided on. I didn't realize the impact of the date or how stressful it would be. And after my second year of law school, I actually had my daughter, my oldest daughter. So while I was in law school, I wasn't just going to law school, but I was getting married. I was learning this new relate marriage, what marriage is about. And then I was pregnant and I was learning what a child is about. It's a compromise. It's a constant compromise.
Yes.
You know, it's about learning how to support each other and to encourage each other and to help each other, but also to give as much as you're getting whenever possible.
Do you ever feel that in a marriage, you have to be a diplomat, the forever diplomat or no? Now, that's a serious question.
Yes, you do. I think you always have to be, you always have to remember your words. You, you want to be able to freely speak, but you have to think about what you're saying. Because once you say something, you can never take it back. And so you have to be a diplomat in the sense that when you speak out of passion or anger or in the heat of the moment, you tend to say things that you don't necessarily mean. And those moments can last forever in a person's mind. And so you always have to be cognizant of that. And I try to do that. I try to think about what I'm going to say before I say it, even in a marriage. Because it has, you want to be genuine, but you don't want to speak out of anger, I guess.
Do you feel you have to be a bit of a negotiator at times too?
Oh, yes. I think it's a give and take marriage. Having a successful marriage is about giving and taking. You have to remember that it's not always going to be about you. You have to, when you agree to get married, you're agreeing to put the needs of other people ahead of you at times. Not all the time.
Yeah, at times.
No, there are times that you have to put your needs first.
You're no longer though front and center all the time.
Exactly.
When you're single, you are front and center.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And having a successful marriage is about recognizing that and understanding it, and both people understanding it. I think it has to be give and take. Nobody can win every, every time. And no one should win every time.
Does it get easier at all?
Yes.
It does?
You begin to learn each other. You begin to, I guess, avoid arguments before they happen. Not every issue is an issue that needs to be talked-
Fought all the way and-
Exactly. There are certain things that can just be let go. Because if you tend, it's, marriage is what you make of it. If you focus on the positive, positive will come. If you focus on the negative, negative will come. You just have to decide on what you want to focus on. And-
How long have you been married now?
Twelve years, come two weeks from now.
Beautiful. I pray for another twelve multiplied by four.
Thank you, thank you.
That is beautiful, really beautiful, Maryam. So you were in law school, you were learning to be a wife.
Yes.
You were, you, you got pregnant, you had your oldest, your daughter, while you were at the end of second year of law school, I believe. And then you graduated from law school. And what did you do right after graduating?
I, I didn't know what to do. I had graduated from law school. I wasn't exactly sure where I wanted to go or what I wanted to do. And that's actually when I had met Abid Hamud. And he's now a good friend of mine, the founder of APEC. And he encouraged me to volunteer at the prosecutor's office.
Who is at the Attorney General's office right now?
He's at the US Attorney's Office.
I'm sorry, I always confuse the two. Who is at the US Attorney's Office?
Yes. And so I went in and I volunteered at the prosecutor's office. And I realized I absolutely loved it. I had never thought I would do criminal law, but from the moment I, I went there.
So this was through Abid as well? Because he was at, at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office before joining the US Attorney's Office?
Yes, he encouraged me to volunteer there. So I was a attorney volunteer in two thousand and five.
His boss is Barbara McQuade?
Now, his boss is Barbara McQuade, yes.
Another very powerful woman.
Yes.
Wow. The head of the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office is Kim Worthy.
Yes.
A, I'm happy to say that she's a friend and a very, very impressive woman.
Yes, she is.
Barbara McQuade is another very impressive woman. And she heads the US Attorney, Attorney General's Office. I just heard her speak. She was the keynote speaker at the very well put together, my apologies, the very well put together Arab-American, excuse me, Kalidian American Bar Association.
Okay.
Kaba. And she was asked to be the keynote speaker, very impressive.
We have some wonderful role models in our area.
Women.
We're very lucky, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, as we were growing up, I mean, we, we weren't, there weren't that many, even in American society. And much less in Middle Eastern society.
Yes.
You volunteered through Abid and you got your exposure to criminal law and you absolutely loved it. You felt it fit like a glove, hence why you are a prosecuting attorney-
Yes.
At the prosecutor's office.
Yes.
Okay. Talk to me about how you became involved with APEC? And whose idea was it for you to run for president of APEC?
Well, I became involved with APEC, I had been involved prior to. And when I first got out of high school, I had joined AAI, which was the Arab-American Institute. I was involved with them briefly and I was involved volunteering for ADC. I used to be at the Arab-American Festival registering people to vote. So I've always had that civic duty, I guess, instilled within me. But I had taken a break while I was in law school. And so it was a natural fit for me to go to APEC. And it was, I learned about it through speaking with Abid when I had met with him.
He's very passionate about it.
Yeah. I became involved with APEC for years and I, I loved what they did. I love that they encouraged me to do, to be involved. I love that I received a lot of support within the organization. And I love the fact that I, I believed it was an organization that was interested in the betterment of the entire community.
But it's quite a grassroots, it's a Dearborn grassroots organization. They have a lot of influence, particularly but not limited to Dearborn. I mean, the, the, the people that they endorse for election every couple of years, how they help, how they send volunteers. I mean, very impressive, very impressive machinery.
Oh, we do a lot. It wasn't, I thought all organizations did as much as we did until I started talking to people.
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, and they don't. I mean, well, in terms of actually giving every candidate an opportunity to come in and be heard, everyone has a fair shake at being endorsed. You know, they just have to come and-
I, I, I did participate in the interviews of, of people who, who wanted to be endorsed, I remember. I, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and then not just endorsing them, but going above and beyond. We send out literature on their behalf. We put poll workers. We, we really do what we can to spread the message to go out and vote for these people.
How did, how, how did it come about that you became president? Was that your idea? Was that their idea?
Well, at the time, I was asked if I would be interested.
Because right before you, I mean, you had to walk into the very heavy shoes of Osama Siblani, who was president for a number of years.
Yeah, I think, I went in and I, I was asked if I was interested and I thought about it.
Who asked you, if you don't mind me asking?
I think it was the, a couple of members at the time. I do remember talking to Abid about it. I remember talking to Osama.
But was it your idea or did somebody propose it to you?
Well, at the time, I gotta say, it was proposed to me, but then I thought about it. So ultimately, it, it was something that-
So now you, okay.
It was, well, I gotta say, it wasn't that it wasn't my idea. I always wanted to grow within the organization.
It was bodacious at the time. I must, I mean, we're talking about a mere four years ago. But do you agree with me that women have become a lot more progressive just in the past four years?
Yes.
That a woman who wouldn't have spoken up about wanting to be at the helm of something four years ago is going to be very gutsy about it four years later?
Yes.
Yeah?
And, you know-
It's going by very fast.
It's going by very fast. And a lot of people didn't know if I was, if I had the ability, I guess, to do it. When I say ability, because it was a very male-dominated arena, politics.
And look, look at who you were replacing.
Yes. And I was replacing a person who was very vibrant, very outspoken. But with that said, I think what I had taught, I've kind of, I hope people have learned from me is that you, there are different ways of leading. You don't, you know, of course Osama is wonderful and he has his own, he has his way.
He has his own style, yeah.
He has his own style. I have a different style. And you don't have to be, you can lead without having to be in everyone's face all the time, I guess, for lack of a better term. I, people didn't think that I had control or I was able, I was the one making the decisions.
Even while you were serving as president?
Even while I was serving as president, people would go to-
That does not surprise me.
People would go, yeah.
That does not surprise me at all that people would think that. That does not surprise me at all, that people would think that. At first, they think that, and then, you know, what's that saying? First, they, um, they deny it, and then they fight you, and then they accept it, and, uh, you know?
But what they would do is they would go to other members, the male members of the organization, and they'd ask them questions. And what those male members would do is say, "Go call, go call Miriam. Go call Miriam." And people were surprised that they were saying. So, even though it took the community a minute to understand that the organization was serious when it elected me as president.
You weren't just a figurehead.
Exactly. And so, I think that that was really important for-
Maryam, did you have your doubts about being capable of, uh, of being at the head of this organization?
Yes. It wasn't-
Thank you for being honest.
Yes. No, I, I did. I mean, I was a young woman who, um, was at the beginning, kind of at the beginning of my legal career. I'd been an attorney for a few years.
It is a daunting position.
Yes, and it was, it's intimidating. I'm not going to say it isn't.
Of course it is.
It, the reason it was able to work for me is because I had a great support system, um, not just through the organization itself, but at home, um, with my family and my husband. And I think the community gave me a lot of support. But it's not easy, and I don't want to pretend it is. Everything, anything in life that's worth getting is a struggle.
And might I add that in that position, like in other positions, you're being a trailblazer. So, there isn't any other woman you could have gone to before you, with whom you would have, you know, sat down and, and gotten tips. So, that doesn't make it easy either. You know, if you said anything other than, "Yeah, it was daunting. I, I wouldn't have believed it myself." Um, I wanted to say something, and my apologies, I totally forgot. Uh, if anybody who has any doubts about you, and I know nobody, nobody, eh, no longer has, to the extent that any had, or some had. I watched you in action for hours on end, very recently, at the Binsch Bayle Cultural Center twentieth, uh, gala.
Yes.
You were asked by the Turfies, Judge Turfy and his dad, the founding member of this magnificent organization, the Binsch Bayle Cultural Center, um, that is a nonprofit organization, to serve as the mistress of ceremony.
Yes.
And I watched you, Maryam, I had not seen you in two or three years, and I watched you in action for about three, three and a half years. You know, my hat is off to you. I'm going to tell you why. Number one, you were extremely articulate. Number two, you were very poised in the midst of quite a bit of chaos. Number three, I watched many males, or a few males in the room, trying to derail you. Uh, the way you handled, and there was no evil intent, you know, in the, in the, in the, in the passion of the moment. They wanted you to recognize somebody, or give credence to something, as you were, you know, serving as mistress of ceremony. Not once did you lose your cool. Not once were they able to derail you, or take you off your center. And you did it all with so much elegance, so much poise, so much articulateness, and quiet, quiet confidence. Anybody who thinks that leadership or strength has to be loud, has to watch you, and I want to tell you, I'm not paying you a compliment. I watched you in action for about three hours, and some of what you had to do was responding to the moment, and not once were you thrown off. Not a single time. I was ve- very impressed.
Thank you.
Because men or women, women or men, could be easily derailed here or there, and you weren't. Not once. And some situations were, um, um, you know, uh, impetuous, or they weren't scripted one bit. They weren't expected. They weren't within what you had prepared for. And wow, it was very impressive. And not once did you give in to any of the males who were trying to pressure, pressure you in that room to do certain things, and yet, at the same time, you gave respect to everybody, and you stayed on the course. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Very impressive. I don't know how you learned that, but, um-
Well, I think it's, it's part of growing up in this community. I mean, this is a very patriarchal community.
You bet.
And learning as a, um, being a woman in this community, you have to learn how to handle your, seek control in a way that doesn't offend anybody, or that, um, kind of works-
Offend that night, you did not, although you didn't give in.
Thank you. And there are some, uh, and I gotta say, uh-
You remember, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I know our moments are so few. I remember an example where one of the founding members, you asked everybody, uh, who was a founding member, to go to the back of the room to cut the ribbon cake.
Yes.
And one of the founding members wanted to invite, wanted you to also ask to join that group, a few politicians who weren't founding members, and they, that person screamed out to you, the founding member asking you to ask another politician to join. And very quietly, with a superb smile on your face, you repeated what you said. You said, "The founding members, if you would please, go to the back of the room for the, the ribbon cutting, or the whatever ceremony." Do you remember that? That was one of many examples. Maybe you don't remember. Uh, you didn't give in to that founding member, by the way.
I didn't.
He didn't get to bring, he didn't get to bring his politician friend with him.
Well, there, you know, there were a lot of people in the room, and, uh, you know, the founding members-
Seven hundred, eight hundred people.
Exactly.
It was very, it was a very, very uplifting, by the way, so to speak.
Oh, it was, it was a great event.
In those Turfies, I'm, I'm very fond of them.
Oh, yeah. Judge Turfy is wonderful, and his family.
Of how authentic they are, of how awesome they are.
Yeah, there are a lot of-
What about those four children, and that, that beautiful wife that-
Yes.
-Judge Turfy has?
Yes. No, it is, it's a, in Binsch Bayle Cultural Center is, is just a great organization. It was such an honor to be asked to emcee that event, but then again, I-
You know what? It was also their honor to ask you to emcee the event, because you did a second to non-job.
Thank you. But I have to tell you-
They knew who they chose.
That goes to show how the community's changed, because once again, this is a very male-dominated, uh, dominated organization, and they reached out to a woman to come in and to emcee the event, and I think that that's, once again, gone to show that this community is changing.
Where were we and where, where we are.
Exactly.
Um, Maryam, I mean, I wish we have another half hour, because I want to talk about advice you have for women who are listening. And I do apologize to a number of people called. We just couldn't take their calls because the conversation was flowing, and I didn't really want to interrupt it. What advice do you have for Arab-American, Middle Eastern women listening?
Uh, don't-
It's okay to, to feel the fear and do it anyways, right?
Exactly. Don't give up. It's hard. No one's gonna, anyone who tells you it's easy hasn't done it, or hasn't-
Hasn't done it or is lying.
Exactly. It, it is hard. Everything I've ever done has been a struggle. Um, even when I was in college and I wanted to join the debate team, and the debate team was traveling, that was a struggle. It was about making my parents understand that it was okay to travel. But everything that's worth it takes time. It takes energy, and there's so many benefits to be gained from it. And one, one way that I look at it is, not only what I'm doing hopefully is opening doors for me, but it'll open doors for other people as well. So, when you're doing it, don't just think about yourself. Think about the person who's going to look at you one day and say that you planted a seed in their mind that they can do more, and that they can do better. And so, what you're putting out in the world is greater than just you. It's about the, the reward that everybody around you will gain from the positive things that you can do. It's not easy, but it's attainable, and I hope that people understand that by looking at me.
So, the fact that it is scary, so what? The fact that it's not easy, so what? You can do it.
Yes.
Maryam, thank you so much. I hope we can have you again here.